This board meet, the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, on May the 13th, 2025. And at 6:06 PM, I like to call it the order. We have an invocation. We have an invocation and first a moment of silence. Thank you. We have the pledge allegiance by all middle school students. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for inviting us tonight. We are really excited to be here. This is part of our morning routine that we do every day. And so with us today, we have Tylin Ivy, Cora Boganwright, Richard and Avery Walters, Isabella Collins, Paisley Britt.
We're going to start. All right, man. I do want to recognize, we do have Mr. Henry Brewer. He's virtual with us tonight.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I want to take time that we recognize Dr. Terry Locklear. Congratulations. This Saturday, he received his doctorate from UNC W. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Terry. Now, we have the adoption of the agenda. Motion been made by Mr. Trey Britt. Second being made by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Approval of open session minutes. There been a motion made by Mr. Trey Britt. A second being made by Mr. John Simmons. All in favor say aye. All opposed? All right, for information items only. Now, first, we're going to have Ms. Jessica Sealy. She's going to have Blue Ribbon Awards, followed by Governor School recipient by Dr. Deborah Dallas. Teacher Fellows, Dr. Sheri Hinden. Gates Scholars, Dr. Sheri Hinden. And would the board members please stand? And we're going to stay up there for the remainder.
Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and Board Members. I'm honored to stand before you tonight to share some exciting news on behalf of our district. At this year's North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbons Award Ceremony, PSRC was recognized with multiple awards for excellence in school communications. These awards highlight our ongoing commitment to keeping our families, staff and community informed, engaged and proud of the work happening across the school district. Thank you for your continued support of our communications efforts. It is an honor to tell the stories of our students and staff every single day. Thank you.
Taking award, thank you. You want to hold it, please? You taking award? You taking award? You want to take an award? All right. Y'all come on in for our picture.
Also want to recognize Jessica. She was elected to North Carolina Schools, Public Relations Association Board of Directors. Congrats for two-year term. Congratulations.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson and Board Members. This evening, we are excited to recognize two students who attended the North Carolina Governor's School for the 23-24 school year on behalf of the Public Schools of Robinson County. At this time, I would like to ask Jakela Morgan to please come forward. It is my honor to recognize Jakela, come right here dear, Morgan, for her acceptance and attendance at the North Carolina Governor's School. Jakela is an early graduate from Lumberton Senior High School and attended the campus of North Carolina Greensboro for the Governor's School. She has committed to A&amp;T for the upcoming fall semester as a psychology major. And she has shared that the Governor's School has really changed who I am as a person. My mind is more open and I'm grateful for all of the people I have met while attending. So please join me in congratulating Jakela. And I see that her family has come up for pictures as well. So we're going to go ahead and do, go ahead and take turns. Shake your board members' hands. So much, always. Congratulations, sir. And at this time, I would like to ask Garrett Merlot to please come forward. It is my honor to recognize Garrett Merlot for his acceptance and attendance at the North Carolina Governor's School. Garrett, a senior at Lumberton Senior High, attended the campus of North Carolina Greensboro as well. Garrett plans to attend UNC Chapel Hill to major in biomedical engineering. His goal is to work at the intersection of math and medicine, helping design innovative solutions that improve lives. And I know you're going to do that. You're going to do that. Garrett shares that the Governor's School opened my eyes to a world where curiosity was celebrated and growth came from questioning, not just answering. It gave me the confidence to embrace my voice and to think boldly. So congratulations. And I see your family has joined us as well. Congratulations again.
Good afternoon Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and Board Members. It is with great pleasure I present to you the Teaching Fellow recipients tonight. So first, we will start with Lumberton Senior High School, Nicole Galvez Hernandez. If you are here, if you would please come up. So she is not with us tonight, but we have Mr. Brooks, who will be coming up to accept this award. Again, Nicole currently attends Lumberton High School and was awarded the Teaching Fellow Scholarship. With this scholarship, she plans to attend the University of North Carolina at Pembroke to earn her bachelor's degree in elementary education. After college, she plans to pursue a teaching career as a third grade teacher. So let's congratulate Nicole Galvez Hernandez. Our next recipient is Ms. Kenley McElwain. Ms. Kenley will be attending the University of North Carolina at Pembroke. She plans to pursue a bachelor's degree in elementary education. After graduation, she plans to dedicate her time to teaching as well as continuing her studies in the Masters of Counseling Program at UNC Pembroke. Congratulations, Kenley. Our next recipient for the North Carolina Teaching Fellow Scholarship is Ms. Caitlin Woodell from Lumberton Senior High School. Ms. Caitlin will be attending North Carolina State University in the fall to pursue a bachelor's degree in science education. Caitlin has a passion and love for life sciences and being awarded this scholarship will give her the opportunity to share her passion with her future high school students as she embarks on the journey of becoming an educator. Let's give Caitlin a big round of applause. Our next recipient is from Purnell Sweat High School, Daniella Dial. Daniella is a proud graduate of Robinson Early College High School, where she earned both her high school diploma and an associate of science degree. She received her Bachelor of Science from the University of North Carolina at Pembroke and pursuing a master of arts in teaching secondary science at UNCP. Now, in her second year of teaching earth and environmental science at Purnell Sweat High School, she brings passion, purpose and has lived experience, or live experience to her classroom. As a first-generation high school and college graduate and a proud Hispanic woman, her journey into education is deeply personal. She was raised in the same community she now teaches and she understands many of her students' challenges. Her path has required resilience and determination as she has balanced her full-time teaching job, her studies and family life, all while staying committed to giving back to the place that shaped her. Being named a North Carolina Teaching Fellow is a great recognition of her dedication and potential. And as a fellow, she remains focused on growing as a science educator, advocating for equitable learning experiences and inspiring students in Robinson County to believe in what is possible because she has walked that journey herself. So congratulations to Ms. Daniella Dial. We would like to invite our next recipient up from Red Springs High School, Ms. Elena Oxendine, who is not with us tonight. So Elena Oxendine is a current senior at Red Springs High School. Her goal is to become a teacher who can inspire and support students in reaching their full potential. She is passionate about becoming a role model for future generations, making math more accessible and showing students how valuable and rewarding the subject can be. She plans to attend the University of North Carolina at Pembroke to major in mathematics education and pursue a career as a high school math teacher. Congratulations to Ms. Elena Oxendine. Our next recipient is from St. Paul's High School, Ms. Anna McMillan. Ms. Anna McMillan is thrilled to announce that she will be attending the University of North Carolina at Pembroke in the fall. She plans to major in elementary education and minor in American Indian Studies. A combination reflects both her passion for teaching and her commitment to cultural understanding and representation. Becoming an elementary school teacher is something she has always wanted to do for a very long time. Teachers are not only educators, they are mentors and role models. To truly make a difference, a teacher must be dedicated to lifelong learning, adaptable to each child's unique needs and committed to creating a safe and inclusive classroom environment. And she is passionate about shaping young minds and helping children grow not only academically but emotionally and socially. Congratulations. Now, we will move to our Gates Scholarship recipient, starting with Early College. Our recipient, Carlos Caranza, who could not be here with us tonight, but we do have the principal, Mr. Davis, who will be coming up to us to accept the award. Mr. Carlos Caranza will be attending the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and majoring in environmental science. He plans to work for the UNC Center of Public Engagement with Science and run STEM research programs in low-income counties. So join me in congratulating Carlos Caranza. And last but not least, our second Gates Scholarship recipient from Lumberton Senior High School, Ms. Tiana Richardson. Tiana will be attending the University of North Carolina at Wilmington and she plans to major in psychology with a focus on child development. Join me in congratulating our Gates Scholar, Scholarship recipient, Ms. Tiana Richardson.
Now, we have the 2025 summer work schedule, Dr. Freddie Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. In your board package is our 2025 summer work schedule moving to a four-day work week. The public schools will operate on a modified schedule beginning June 30, 2025 for all staff. Our summer hours would be 7:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. All staff will have a 30-minute lunch schedule. So that means that our work week will be Monday through Thursday and then close on Friday. The week of June 30, or July 4, we will close on that Wednesday. Thursday will become that fourth workday for us because Friday is, when is it, 4th of July? Holiday, 4th of July. There will be some exceptions, as in every year, plant operations, technology, transportation, they will close according to the weather and some other needs that they might have. So our four-day work week will end on Monday, August 11, 2025. Any questions?
We got one, Dr. Manuel.
I don't have a question. I just have an observation, just staggering the lunch hours here at the central office.
I'm sorry.
Staggering the lunch hours here at the central office.
Yes, we can do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have ECS classrooms, Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr and Tracy Hunt. Ms. Tracy Hunt.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, and Board members. Tonight, we want to provide an update on our self-contained classrooms. You should have a paper in your packet that is a two-pager that shows the number of current self-contained classrooms at each school, and then any additional or reduction in classes for the upcoming school year. So you'll notice that we will maintain 18 classrooms at the elementary school and add six more based on our current ECS numbers or self-contained numbers. And then you'll see at the middle school, we will maintain 12 classrooms and add three more. And then at the high school, we'll maintain eight, and it will average out to keep basically the same number due to one reduced and one adding a class. Do you have any questions about the self-contained classrooms?
Dr. Manuel, you got a question?
No, sir.
All right. Ms. Kristi Fields?
Can you explain to me why Lummerton Senior has so many classes in comparison to the other high schools?
It is literally, these are all their own students from the zoning area, and so that's how many students currently, they have the highest number of students identified as self-contained students.
But there are no transfers?
No. At the high school, there are absolutely no transfers anymore.
Any more questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Carr.
Thank you.
And Ms. Tracy Hunt, thank you. Next, we have testing calendar 2526 by Ms. Cindy Lewis.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Williamson, and Board members. In your board packet, you have a copy of the 202526 testing calendar for the traditional and early college. To create this testing calendar, we allow the North Carolina Department of Education Operational Testing Calendar, which provides us with a wide window. And then we use our current school year calendar to build our personal district testing calendar. After the testing department creates that calendar, we meet with a testing committee comprised of a principal from the high school, a principal from the middle school and elementary level, as well as early college principal, and then school test coordinators from all grade levels. Once we have gone through that and worked through any issues that they may have at that level or that committee, we move forward. If you have any questions about the testing calendar?
Dr. Manuel?
Does this have to be moved to an action item?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, no, I don't have any questions.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Next, we have 202526 Title IX Grant Application Updates by Dr. Connie Locklear.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board members. The Title VI grant opened up on March 31, and it closed on May 29. So it was a short period of time. So I had to, I sent an email to Dr. Carr asking if we could go ahead and submit the grant, and then we could provide updates for you today. So if you look in the grant narrative, I'm sure you had a chance to read over this, we did a needs assessment this year just to get input from various community stakeholders, and we had 168 individuals that responded. And as you can see, the 88.7% thought the program was good, very good, or excellent. 88.7% thought the program was beneficial, and 91% surveyed thought that the American Indian culture was evidence or embraced within their schools. The really piece I want to get to, I know there's been a lot of questions as it relates to DEI and CRT and how that relates to Indian education. There was an email that was sent out from the Assistant Secretary of Education, and it basically says on the second page, further it is a position of the department that American Indian, Alaska Native, and Native Hawaiian history is not classified as diversity, equity, and inclusion, or critical race theory, and the department will not treat Native history as DEI or CRT. If you look on the very last page, those are the pieces that we want to discuss with you tonight, is that, as you can tell, our grant has decreased $52,000, and that is based on our numbers. The first option, when I discussed with the parent committee, is based on everyone returning. And as you can see, at that point, 93.78% of our grant is personnel. The second option is the one that the parent committee agreed upon, is that if a person decides to retire, that we would not fill that position. And therefore, we could have additional funding for other opportunities for students. I will share with you that I have been working recently with the National ACES, and I've helped them write a grant that will help bring programming and funding to Robinson County. I've also been working with the tribe, and they have also written a grant. And so hopefully, some of those opportunities will, or if we receive those grants, if they receive those grants, that will provide additional programming that we've had to cut due to funding cuts. So do you have any questions?
Dr. Manuel?
Comments? I appreciate what you've done and your program has done to reach Native children. And I should comment with you earlier, and would you make a comment about what I shared about the K-2? You said that you could reach down, but would you?
Yes. A couple, when we first started, the grant basically said that we had to work, as it relates to tutoring, students that were in tested areas, so that would be in grades, we were focusing on grade three. It's very difficult for people unless you have the content area to tutor in high school. So with M-Class and the testing that occurs now in the elementary schools, we have said to YDS and to principals that they can tutor in those areas and provide that foundation for students, so when they get to the testing areas, they'll be more equipped. So that's an opportunity that we can have. The other piece that I would like to share, since you brought that up, is that with these, if we don't have, if we have a person to retire, the board, back to what we said earlier, the parent committee agreed to option two, which means they would have to, we would have to talk, and I've shared this with Dr. Carr already, we'd have to have, we've got to have equity within the county, meaning we, there may be times where we have to move people around, because if we, a person retires and we don't fill that position, that'll be a school without a person. So, and that equity relies upon the percentage of students within that school, and that's how we, it's always been done in the past. Actually, when we were, last time we were audited, that was the one piece that they corrected us on and had us to improve upon. We did not have adequate equity across the county as it relates to percentage and the number of people that were working in the schools with the students.
I want to thank Connie for being here. She's having a bout with her vision, so I won't get into her personal thing, but if you want to say a special prayer for her, I know she'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
We got one, Ms. Kristi Fields?
So with the reduction in your budget, this essentially means if you have a YDS, retire or leave, that's not a position we're looking to fill?
That was my suggestion, and that was the suggestion of the parent committee, because we don't have the funding. I mean, we don't have the funding unless we're going to get some additional funding from PSRC. And I understand that you're, you're cut, I mean, you're talking about cuts too, so we don't have the funding. And the issue right now, honestly, as Ms. Erica and I sat down and had this discussion, the problem is the increase in FICA and insurance and all of that. So in our grant, we pay everything, we're just not paying what people sometimes, when they look at this and they say, you're paying so much in salaries, the assumption is that people are making so much money. That's not the case. The case is that if a person is making $35,000, we're probably paying out close to 50 or 55 because of the insurance and the FICA. So all of that is taken directly out of the grant. So we would have to actually try to move some folks around to make sure that we have supported all the schools. That would be the option there.
All right, Mrs. Terry, Ms. Terry Locklear?
Thank you, Dr. Connie, for all the work you do. On the second page here, it has this statement from Haley Shannon, I guess she's from the federal government or OIE. Have you received any other updates from the federal government as pertaining to information related to DEI that may impact Indian?
Well, I know at the beginning, when there was conversation that OIE, the funding in OIE would fall under BIE, which is the Bureau of Indian Education. Right now, that is not taking place. I know this letter came out of a collaborative effort with, I think it was NCAA, NIEA, Native Health Board, and various Native groups that came together and had conversation with the U.S. Department of Ed. So right now, basically what we're hearing and what I've received from the executive director of NIEA is that the funding, the DIE and some of the cuts related to that will not impact our funding as it relates to OIE. So right now, as far as we know, OIE funds will remain under the U.S. Department of Ed. That was not the original response, unless things change, and I haven't heard anything different at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Connie. Now we have PSRC 251, economically disadvantaged student support, Ms. Erica Setser.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, excuse me, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, and Board members. PRC 251 is a round of funding the State Board of Education approved, actually, two years ago. So in the prior school year, Oxendine Elementary received these funds. And how a school qualifies for these funds is they have a student population that is composed of at least 80% of students identified by NCDPI as economically disadvantaged, and the school exceeded expected growth in the prior school year. So we have shared that Union Elementary has now been awarded these funds. It's $118,963. And we spoke in the Finance Committee meeting that these funds will be used to provide a bonus to the staff at Union, and we will work with Ms. Katrina on those numbers, and I can bring back what that bonus actually ends up being, and it would be for all the staff at the school.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Erica.
Thank you.
Now we have ESER III Fund Extension Update. Richard Schwartz?
Short, Roger.
Short. You let us have it in the finance, I mean, we already heard 30 minutes in the finance committee.
The state filed, the state of North Carolina filed the ESER III Fund Appeals after the cutoff of funds, the abrupt cutoff of funds by the U.S. Department of Education. The amount of money that's involved for our school system was a little over $14 million, so it's significant. Unfortunately, by letter dated May 8, the U.S. Department of Education denied all of the appeals from all the different, for all the different projects from the four different school systems from North Carolina, stating that essentially they don't enhance student learning, which is a new requirement that was added after the prior approvals had been granted by the U.S. Department of Education. They did, in the letter, give us the opportunity to appeal to the U.S. Department of Education again by no later than June 2, I'm sorry, by no later than June 7, 2025. And we're in discussions with the attorneys for the Department of Public Instruction and the Department of Justice in North Carolina to explore different legal options and avenues, including the appeals. But in addition to the appeals, we're also keeping a very close eye on the injunction that was issued by the Federal District Court, the Southern District of New York, against the U.S. Department of Education and in favor of the 16 states and the District of Columbia that chose to sue rather than just go the appeals route that the U.S. Department of Education suggested. One of the things that the court in that case, that federal case said, was that the Department of Education did not follow the appropriate timelines for appeals and had to grant additional opportunities for appeals. So this is developing still, and we're working hard, we're working hard on it. Any questions? Thank you.
Appreciate you, appreciate you, Schwartz. Now we have public comments. We do have one. Emily Rodriguez-Badril. Emily Rodriguez-Badril. I don't think she's here. All right, we'll move right along to the action items. Summer-related services contracts, Dr. Wendy Dorsey Carr.
Good evening, once again, Chairman and Board members. We have a contract extension for Sunbelt staffing. It is just an extension on the dates, running until June 30. Their original contract ended June 6, when the students ended, and so in order for us to continue testing our students, we need the contract to be extended to June 30. It will not change any other components of their contract. Any questions?
Mr. Craig?
No questions. I make a motion to extend the contract.
A motion being made, Mr. Craig Livey, to approve the contract, extend the contract, a second being made by Ms. Dr. Manuel, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you, thank you, Dr. Carr. Next, we have the Duke Energy Gas Easement at Roland Norman by Mr. Bobby Locklear.
Good evening, Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson, Board members. We have been approached to provide an easement at the corner of 10th Street and Godwin Avenue. This is property on the side of Roland Norman. It will be at the very, at the intersection of 10th and Godwin Avenue. It will be a 10 by 10 site, and it will be a rectifier site for the natural gas. I have included the price that they will reimburse us for this easement in your packet. The easement agreement has been reviewed and approved by our attorney.
A motion being made by Mr. John Simmons to approve, we have a second. A second being made by Ms. Melissa Osh, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bobby. Next, we do have the 202526 Planning Budget by Ms. Erica Setser.
Good evening again.
Hold on, Mr. Craig?
A motion that we approved, that we approved the planning budget for 2526.
A motion being made by Mr. Craig Livey to approve the planning budget. A motion being made by Mr. Craig Livey to approve the planning budget 2025-26, and a second being made by Mr. Bradley Phillips, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? All right. Now we got sole source by Ms. Erica Setser. Mr. Craig.
I make a motion, we approve the sole source vendor. It's listed here.
A motion being made by Mr. Craig Lotler to approve the sole source. Do we have a second? A second being made by Mr. John Simmons. We got Mr. Terry, do you got a question? All right, a question by Mr. Terry Lotler.
Yeah, my concern, my only concern is in terms of Apex, you know, we're engaging in a three-year contract, and this is not necessarily for you, Ms. Erica. I understand why it needs to go through a sole source vendor. But my only concern is there was no formal review or discussion of an alternative within the curriculum committee. This is a, this is a pretty good, it's a, it's a pretty sizable dollar amount, and I wish we had had the opportunity to explore alternatives before we are just evaluating this through the lens of finance. Maybe there's something cheaper out there. I would like to see some metrics that discuss how this is working for us and the extent of its use, not necessarily just students logging in. How are they engaging with the content and is it working? But if, if, if this board is okay with continuing to evaluate these educational resources through the, through the sole lens of finance, then, then so be it. But moving forward, I really think we should take some time to, to discuss this as a board and evaluate how these materials are, how our students are engaging with these materials to ensure that, that this is exactly what we need at this point and, and to make sure that everything is, is working to our approval. But thank you.
All right, Trey, you got?
There is also an opt-out clause. We recommended the three-year because they gave us a discount, but there is an opt-out after a year and each year, as long as both parties agree. So that is part of the contract.
Thank you for that, Mrs. Trey Britt. I'm sorry.
And I was going to comment on Terry's, I think here a few months back, Dr. Jill Hathaway and those gave a presentation that I was very much impressed by, and that's part of the reason why I support it, because of going off what those retired educators had said, and they got to take care of a lot of weight to me.
All right, well, we get to do it. Dr. Mania, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Wanted if you were to ask the teachers, they would wholeheartedly support this one because it's, it's been around, it's reliable. I mean, you just feel, feel your way with the teachers with this, Dr. Terry.
We do, we do have a motion and a second on the floor to, to approve the sole source vendor. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Ayes, ayes. Now, yes. Mr. Terry, did you, Mr. Terry didn't support it? He did. You did? Okay, he did, he did. I'm sorry, I did think, I'm sorry. All right, now we have the monthly financial report by Ms. Erica Setser.
And I included a monthly financial report in your packet. I can answer any questions anyone has at this time.
Dr. Mania.
Mr. Chair, I would vote to approve the month report as presented.
A motion being made by Dr. Linda Mania to, to approve the monthly financial report as presented. A second being made by Ms. Melissa Osha, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Emma raises hand, so yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
Yes.
I would, I pretended the entire meeting, I would like to be added to the agenda as participating, even though I didn't speak.
Yes, I, we acknowledge you at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Every recorded you, yes.
And all of your votes have been recorded as ayes.
Doug, that's great.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Ms. Melissa.
I'm moving at the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, going to closed session for the purpose of discussing certified and classified personnel, North Carolina General Statutes 143 through 318, 11A1 and 6, and 115C through 319, and to consult with the attorney retained by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the Board of Education for the Public Schools of Robinson County, and to consider, consider the pending lawsuit, Chloe Oxenden versus Board of Education for PSRC 23CVS 3094 pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 143 through 318, 11A3.
A motion being made to go to closed session by Ms. Melissa Osha, second being made by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor, say aye. Closed sessions.
Got a motion to come out of closed session?
Yep, that was motion by Ms. Ocean. Second by Ms. Fields to come out of closed session.
A motion. A motion to come out of closed session by Ms. Melissa and a second being by Ms. Fields. All in favor say aye. All right, motion to approve. A motion to approve closed session minutes. A motion by Mr. John Simmons and we got a second by Mr. Trey Britt. All in favor say aye. All right, aye's got it. We got a motion to approve classified to certified personnel as amended. All right, we got a motion by Mr. John Simmons to approve certified classified personnel as amended. And we got a second by Mr. Bradley Phillips. And before we do this vote, we got some. We got some people that recuse themselves from the vote. It's going to be Mrs. Trey Britt. Ms. Christie Fields. Mr. Craig Lowry and Mr. Henry Brewer. So all in favor say aye. All opposed? Aye's got it.
That vote is six zero with Ms. Monroe absent. Mr. Britt, Ms. Fields, Mr. Lowry and Mr. Brewer recused.
That's correct. Dr. Williamson?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I want to recommend principals, our new principals tonight. Starting with Ms. Tawana Carey who we were, I'm recommending to go to Thompson Elementary. Ms. Portia Rosleton, Assistant Principal at Prentice Sweat to go to Pembroke Elementary. We will transfer Mr. Aaron Lowry from Deep Branch to Fair Grove Elementary. I'm recommending Ms. Martha Lockler, currently Assistant Principal at Fairmont High School to serve as the new principal of Deep Branch Elementary. I'm recommending Ms. Rebecca Chavis-Nalley, current AP at Peterson Elementary as the new principal at Shining Stars Preschool Lumington. And then Mr. Thomas Zake Jones, current AP at Lumington High as the new principal at Carroll Elementary. Please.
We got a motion to approve the recommendations as principals by Dr. Freddie Williamson, by Mr. Trey Britt. We have a second by Dr. Terry Locklear. All in favor say aye. All, all opposed? Aye's got it.
Can we take one minute for them to introduce themselves to you so you can put their name and their face?
Yep, come on, name to a face, let's go.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Dr. Williamson and board members. Thank you for trusting me with this tremendous opportunity to lead at Carroll Middle School. I've taught my entire career here in the public schools of Robinson County. I've been an administrator at Central Office. I've been back at the, as an AP at Lumberton Senior. And I'm excited to lead at Carroll Middle. Thank you for your support.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williams and fellow board members. I want to express my gratitude for this incredible opportunity to serve as the next principal of Pembroke Elementary School. This is where I began my career, 31 years ago. So it's like going, I'm going home. I always said that I wanted to retire there, so maybe I'll do that, you know? Somebody said, I'll know, but I don't know yet. As I step into this role, I do it with humility, enthusiasm and a deep sense of responsibility. I look forward to listening, learning and working alongside our dedicated educators, students, families and community members. I am eager to get started and serve with integrity, purpose and heart. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Leach, the Superintendent Dr. Williamson and fellow board members. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to serve as principal of Deep Branch Elementary School. I am truly blessed and honored by your confidence in me. I understand the responsibilities that come with this role. I am committed to lead with integrity, collaboration and a clear focus on student success. I look forward to working with every one of you to work on the school's strengths and continue to move forward. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Good evening Chairman Leach, Superintendent Dr. Williamson and board members. I stand before you today deeply honored and humbled to accept the role of principal at Shining Stars. This moment is not just a professional milestone for me. It's a commitment to serve, to listen, to lead and most importantly, to grow with the school community. I want to thank the district leadership for believing in my vision and entrusting me with this great responsibility. Thank you again for this opportunity. I look forward to the journey ahead and all that we will accomplish together. Thank you.
And finally. Ms. Patty Mitchell did announce her retirement tonight after 40 plus years of service. And we thank you for your service. Once again, can we give her round? So I want to add to the request for approval. Tonight, we have a month and a half for Patty to work with. So my recommendation is that Ms. Melissa Freeman become our executive assistant to the superintendent and the board, please.
A motion been made by Mrs. Trey Britt to approve Ms. Melissa Freeman as executive to superintendent. And the board, and we have a second by Dr. Terry Locklear. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Amended. Hey, do we have a motion to amended agenda to add the resolution for Green Grove? A motion been made by Ms. Melissa Ocean to amended agenda to add Green Grove and a second been made?
It's the disposition of property disposition for Green Grove property.
The property disposition of the Green Grove property and the second has been made by Mrs. Trey Britt?
And this requires a two thirds approval.
All in favor say aye. All opposed? Aye's got it. Mr. Terry? I'm sorry.
I make a motion to direct the attorney to prepare the appropriate paperwork for the disposition of property located on Shawneal.
No, we need to vote on the Green Grove resolution now. Need a motion to approve the resolution for the disposal of the public sewer property at Green Grove. That was just a motion to amend the agenda.
We amended it, I'm sorry. There been a motion by Mr. Trey Britt and a second by Ms. Melissa Ocean.
To approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution of the Green Grove property. All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Past 10-0?
Yes, past 10-0. Now you Mr. Terry.
Do we need to modify the agenda to add this?
Yes. Yeah.
I make a motion to modify the agenda to include a motion to approve disposals.
Direction to the attorneys to prepare.
The direction to the attorneys to prepare the appropriate paperwork required of property located on Shawneal Road and negotiate an offer for an upset bid.
All right, that's good. A motion been on the table by Mr. Terry Locklear. And a second been made by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Now we need to vote on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Van Teel, I want you to make sure you point at me at the right time next time. But I appreciate it.
My fault, I'm sorry.
It's okay, I make a motion to direct the attorney to prepare the appropriate paperwork for the disposition of property located on Shawneal Road and negotiate an offer for an upset bid.
There's been a motion on the table by Mr. Terry Locklear for the disposition to give the attorney. Authorization of the disposition of the.
To prepare the paperwork.
Prepare the paperwork for the Shawneal property on Shawneal Road. For upset bidding process.
Negotiate it off for advertisement and upset bid.
Negotiations of our advertisement and upset bid process. And there been a second by Ms. Melissa Ocean. All in favor say aye. All opposed? 10-0.
Got it.
Now then we got a motion to adjourn. There been a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Trey Britt? Hold on one second.
He made the motion, he made the second.
Yes. A motion been made by Mr. John Simmons and a second been made by Mrs. Trey Britt. But hold up, we got Mr. Bobby.
Chairman Leach and board members, just to remind everyone and Ms. Jessica will send an email Thursday night is our driven to Excel event. Next Tuesday night is our retirement employee recognition banquet. And the following Thursday night is superintendent awards. But Ms. Jessica will send, Ms. Jessica will send an email with the times in place.
All right, appreciate it. So we got a motion to adjourn by Mr. John Simmons. A second by Mr. Trey Britt, all in favor say aye. Meeting adjourned.